This, my name is Dan Carney. It is my distinct privilege to serve as the chairman of this board. And this is a meeting of the Board of Trustees of Weatherford College, Thursday, May the ninth, 2024, 12:30 PM, Community Room of the Emerging Technologies and Workforce Building, 225 College Park Drive, Weatherford, Texas, to consider and act upon a posted agenda. I do call this meeting to order. And Mr. Baker, would you please give us the invocation?
Happy to, sir. Please bow with me. Well, we're thankful to you for another great academic year. We thank you for all of the students you brought our way. We thank you for our faculty and staff and how they've been a part in changing their lives for the better. Well, we do think about Sue Cody's family today and pray that you will be with them and give them the peace that surpasses all understanding. Thank you for that. And we thank you for our board and the time that they spend. Please be with them as they deliver. In your name we pray. Amen.
I'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Worley, do we have any folks signed up to address us today? Thank you very much. The third item on the agenda is the president's report. President Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions and employee notices. Recognitions. The first class of the cardiovascular sonography students is set to graduate from Weatherford College. We are very proud of not only our new cardiovascular sonography program, but of all of our exceptional allied health programs. Weatherford College recently had 27 coyote athletes named academic all conference. Each recipient earned at least 36 hours of courses leading to a degree while maintaining a cumulative grade point average of 3.25 or higher. The sixth annual Weatherford College International Piano Competition was a tremendous success. We had over 170 contestants coming from 21 countries around the world. The winner, Hao Zhou Wang of China, is a student at the Juilliard School in New York. We have Dr. Song and Dean Durett with us. Would the two of you please stand where we could give you a round of applause? Employee notices. DMAC Local requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. Nicole Elliott, an instructor in information technology, resigned effective 5/11/24. Anna Scarborough, an instructor in life sciences, resigned 5/11/24. And Rhonda Torres, an institutional advancement and educational professor, retired effective 8/18/24. We thank Nicole, Anna, and Rhonda for their service and wish them the very best in future endeavors. Mr. Chair, that concludes the president's report.
Thank you, President Farmer. Just a couple of points of personal privilege. As noted by Brent Baker a few moments ago with the passing of Sue Cody. Saw so many of our faculty and staff there. That pastor did a tremendous job on behalf of Sue. I know she was smiling at all the kind things and wonderful things that were said that day. And I appreciate you including her in our invocation today. One other quick point. It's come to my attention that May the 4th of this year happened to be the anniversary of our president being president of this institution for some six years now. And I'm not about to let that pass without commenting upon it and congratulating you for the job well done. Could I have a round of applause for our president? Item number four on the agenda, consent agenda and financial reports. It's been posted the approval of minutes from the April 11th, 2024 board meeting. The financial reports that are ending on April the 30th, 2024. Item number C, the DIR TSO 4167 contract quote from the FLARE data systems on annual Cisco Meraca networks, equipment licensing and maintenance renewal. President Farmer, is there any comment that needs to be made about any of those items to your knowledge?
No, sir.
Okay. Ms. Cantrell, do you have any comment about all those? Having said that, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as has been posted?
Yes, sir.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. It is unanimous, it is approved. We next have a report from President Farmer on several items. So I'll turn it to President Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Included in your board packet, we have the Weatherford College Wise County Academics and Student Services update, as always. Additionally, you will see the preliminary 2024-2025 budget report. And last but not least, we have with us today, as previously mentioned, Dean Duane Durett and Dr. He Young Song, who are going to briefly, and I emphasize briefly when Mr. Duane Durett is involved, talk to us about the huge, huge success that was our sixth annual Weatherford College International Piano Competition. So Dr. Song, the floor is yours. Oh, you've got a video.
Oh, okay.
I've been to Texas hundreds of times. I even was one of the Van Cliburn competition winners, so not too far from here. But I had never been here. And I didn't know that it was such a fine campus and an all Steinway school, which is wonderful. And the competition today used not only a beautiful Steinway D, but also a superior piano. And it's amazing that the college has this in this fine auditorium. As for the contestants, we only heard the nine finalists. But I heard that there were 177 applicants, which is a humongous number. So congratulations. And this goes to the reputation of the competition that people want to apply and compete.
We, as adjudicators, have a chance to hear these students for the first time. We have not heard them in other rounds before because there is a previous jury selecting them. So we don't come here with previous ideas or thoughts about how the students have performed before.
Everyone thinks that technique is the most important tool. Well, it is important because if your technique is not good, you're going to have problems. But the technique, for me, is never the goal. It's a means to an end. And that end begins with sound.
We give them a chance to express themselves freely for half an hour with a repertoire of choice. And we derive our concepts from these performances without reestablishing ideas.
The atmosphere here is very welcoming. They're treating us really well. They took us to a really nice dinner last night and just got to know us. And it seems like they're not just doing this to like have a competition, but just to actually get to know performers, make connections. So it's a really valuable experience here.
Many know in this community that Weatherford College has the status of an all Steinway school. We look forward to many more contestants in the future coming to Weatherford, Texas and participating in next year's seventh annual piano competition.
I think it's great. I really like, first of all, the city, the state, and the competition organization is very good and the people are very welcoming, as well as the piano is absolutely amazing.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer and the Weatherford College Board of Trustees for allowing us to give this report today. In 2019, our inaugural year, we began with 24 entries, mainly from local schools. Year two, due to the pandemic, it was all online. Despite many music competitions and events being canceled, ours was one of the few successfully held. In 2022, our thought was to move the competition from April to June to attract more participants. We found April is the best time to hold this. Now, in our most recent year, 2024, we extended it to one division without an age limit, resulting in 177 entries from 22 nations. Without the age division, our youngest was 10 years old and our oldest was 39 years old. One of the 10 finalists was 13 years old. We believe this proves that age doesn't determine a musical ability. Moving on to the reasons behind our remarkable success. First, our competition has world-renowned judges whose expertise and reputation attract top-tier talent globally. Second, we uphold the high standards of fairness and transparency in our competition, ensuring every contestant receives a fair evaluation. Moreover, our competition created a welcoming environment for contestants with a warm atmosphere throughout. And we use a part of social media to effectively advertise the competition, reaching classical piano audiences worldwide. And the competition was live streamed around the world each year. And finalists perform on the finest pianos. Along with the pianos, we also received support from Steinway. We are proud to say that in just six years, the Weatherford College International Piano Competition has earned remarkable recognition and acclaim as one of the major international piano competitions in the United States. Our competition draws top-tier talent with contestants from prestigious institutions. Additionally, our competition became a model for other schools.
Thank you, Dr. Song.
We're always looking at how we can make this better. And just as Dr. Song mentioned, one year we tried it in June and it didn't work. So we thought we might capture some more students, depending on school year and availability. But it did work. Obviously, we think April is the best time and it's proving to be true. But some of the things that we've found, one of the mothers of the 15-year-old, which was our third-place finalist, Victoria B., I was talking to her mother and she said, "I've never heard of Weatherford College. They live in Plano." And so one of our goals is we've got to change that. Now, her teacher recommended her to this competition. So we think that's great. But we've got to get into those schools and let the students be aware of it, too. And also, I think you heard Enrico Elisi say he's at TCU, but he didn't know about us. So, and I have to say something about judges. Now, we had some excellent judges. But do you remember that Saturday? It was raining. It was raining hard. And I get a phone call from the judges and they said, "We can't find it. We're on the campus." And so I tried to get them to tell me where they were. And I looked out the door and I could see them. And so I thought, what kind of judges has Dr. Song got? But it turned out very good. And through, you know, through social media and improved mailouts, and we do these mailouts to all, and it goes international. They go into Korea and around the United States, into Europe. And so we think we're going to continue to do it. Okay, how do we continue to grow? Well, we need to improve our ability to recruit international students. Now, of the 10 finalists, six were international. Four were American. Of the three finalists, of the three finalists top winners, two were Asian, one was Russian. And so we're having to look at that. And, you know, there's, you can talk about all kinds of reasons why that is so. But we are going to continue to work with the instructors at these institutions. And one of the things we need to do, and I've mentioned this to Dr. Farmer, is we need a dedicated Steinway piano on stage. Right now, we move pianos a lot. And we do that. But there's a lot of tuning involved. Sometimes you might chimp one of those things. So we're very careful and it has not happened. But also, it would be available for the piano competition and any other event on the stage. And we want to attract and grow donors. Most competitions are supported by donors. And so we are going to be working with Brent and anybody else that can help us. Because the vision for this competition, one of the visions we're talking about, where there's pros and cons to it. In the next two or three years, we could have three finalists. There could be a semifinalist and then a finalist. Or maybe there were three finalists and they would perform with an orchestra. And of course, that requires more money. And we've got to talk about that. And maybe it eliminates some people who might not feel that they can compete with or perform with an orchestra. Got a lot to think about, but I think it's a good idea that we're going to, we're definitely going to talk about. Okay, revenue. There is a revenue and expense side to this. Right now, we have, in our, in the college budget, we're very thankful of that. We have $18,800. Our contestants paid $150 entry fee. There were 177. This is our revenue. And so we had a total budget revenue of $45,350. And then there's the expense side. I didn't put the numbers by this. But I think we're going to clear about $5,000, which is good. But the judges and the winners' prizes are the top cost. But also, we spend money on advertising through Facebook, Instagram. And this year, we also, each of the 10 finalists received a stipend of $300. That's to help offset the expenses, hotel. They pay their own expenses, but we thought this would be beneficial to help them. And a lot of promotional items. We brought you all a tumbler and a coffee cup. And so we, all of the finalists leave with all kinds of things from Weatherford College and Weatherford. And so I think that's good for them. Mini piano tunings. We had to have a Steinway tech on stage that piano gets tuned after about every two contestants. And of course, then we are responsible to take care of the judges and the contestants and there's green room for those contestants. Anyhow, Dr. Song.
Thank you, everyone. Especially, thank you to Dr. Farmer for your support and offering a special dinner with all finalists. That was truly special. And thank you to Mr. Brent Baker for announcing our ceremony. Thank you so much. Along with Dr. Farmer and Mr. Baker, we want to thank all of these college departments and everyone here who helped 2024 competition and create success. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have to say, I went to the competition on Saturday afternoon. It was raining very hard and we heard it in that building. But it was absolutely amazing. I sat behind the judges and watched. I don't know how they judged because these contestants played for like 30 minutes by memory. And it was, it was just absolutely incredible. Very, very good job. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you for that, Leela, very much. I think we're now down to announcements. Brent Baker?
Yes, sir. Upcoming events. We do have our ex-student lunch coming up on May the 13th. That's Monday. And I'd like to let you know that our director of our bachelor's degree program in teaching, we are speaker on Monday, Dr. Leslie Hancock. So any of you, anyone in the room is welcome to come to the event. Of course, commencement, May 23rd. Dr. Teague and his team have been working hard to make that a great event at the Fort Worth Convention Center. It's a six o'clock start that evening. We have a teen musical theater camp show coming up, Shrek the Musical Junior. You see the dates and times there in your packet. And then we have a Shakespeare production right after that, produced by our theater department, as you like, June 13th through the 16th. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Brent. We're down to item number seven, where the board will enter into a closed session on real property and any employee matters that we might have to consider. We are in recess.
The time now is 1:53 PM, May the 9th, 2024. We have returned from our closed session. We are now down on the agenda item number eight, consideration and possible action with regard to real property, and we do have an action item today. And I'll call upon Mr. Dowd to present a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to approve the purchase of 1401 Sloan Street in Weatherford, Texas. Property is currently owned by Ms. Nancy Hawkins in the amount of $240,000 plus closing costs as negotiated by the President, Todd Allen Farmer. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, this will be paid for in cash utilizing an unrestricted reserves fund in compliance with the Public Property Finance Act and board policy, CFG Legal.
Thank you for that motion. Is there a second to the motion? Dr. Marlett, all in favor of this motion? It should be unanimous. Motion is approved. Next item is item number nine, consideration and possible action for appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee. We do not have any action items with regard to item number nine today, which brings us